10:00 AM. And I'm going to call the meeting order. Received a draft agenda in the email in which I invited you to the meeting. Is there, I mean, share that with you, I hope?
I move we accept the agenda.
Second.
Okay, there is the agenda there with you. There's a mood and second that we accept the agenda. I'm the technology of Zoom has been altering itself pretty regularly, so I am going to ask that you go to your reactions button and then if you have a yes, press yes. If you don't have a yes or no, as the case may be, if you don't like the or or press the raise hand, either one will be fine. Looks like we have at least a majority, so I'm going to stop the chair. And at this moment, I will turn the meeting over to Ian Strauss, who will host the candidates forum for City Council District One. Ian, let's see, can you unmute Ian?
Okay. Here I am. First, let me check what candidates we have online. I believe I spotted Roberto Trevino in
Here.
the view. Do we have Mario Bravo?
Here.
Do we have Laura Bustamante?
Yes, here.
Okay, do we have Raymond Lewis? Evidently not. Do we have Matthew Ghana? Okay. Well, they may come in later, but we have with us today candidates for City Council District One. And the plan is similar as the last meeting. I'll give each candidate two minutes to do a self introduction and stump speech. And then in rotation, so that no one always goes first or no one always goes last, I'll ask them questions. At this time, I would like to also ask those NEBCD members who are from District One to ask questions which occur to them, but they really want to ask all the District One candidates. And if at the end, I may be able to give everyone 30 seconds to sum up and say a few last words.
Yeah, send the send the questions through chat.
So let's begin in the order in which I believe they'll appear on the ballot. Let us begin with Mario Bravo. Mario, speak to us for two minutes, please.
Thank you very much for hosting this forum. My name is Mario Bravo. I moved to to San Antonio in the third grade and attended all public schools here. Then I went to UT Austin, got a history degree later on, a master's degree from their LBJ School of Public Affairs, and I really consider myself a policy generalist. Since graduating, I've worked for a nonprofit organization, the Environmental Defense Fund. And my work is really focused on, or it's been centered around the intersection between air quality, health and climate change. I have a lot of background on energy issues. And I have a track record of pushing through reforms at CPS Energy to make them more accountable, more transparent. I want to bring that same, those same efforts to City Hall. And to, you know, to our other utilities, including SARS. I really want to focus on supporting Metro Health and making sure that we make health a priority in San Antonio to alleviate the disparities that we have across our community. And I really, I think my my approach is to see the public as a partner in in creating good government. So I want to work with you all, bring different members from the community together, facilitate conversations, share everyone's ideas, challenge each other's ideas respectfully, and build consensus and get buy-in from the community on how we move forward and working together to solve the biggest challenges that we have in our city. So thank you very much.
All right. Let us next hear from Roberto Trevino.
Thank you so much. I'm Roberto Trevino, you said councilman, District One. I've been in this role for six plus years. If this last year has shown us anything, it is how quickly all of us can become vulnerable in the midst of a crises, then also a storm hit. It has emphasized emphasized the need for us to address issues like housing and infrastructure, to develop a real social safety net. Programs like Under One Roof, which I developed to date, has helped over 1,000 homes, mostly seniors, stay in place. Sidewalk reconstruction, which is a vital part of our infrastructure, is an incredible part of program that we develop. Risk mitigation fund and right to council, right to council has an efficacy rate, a success rate of 94% in helping people avoid eviction. Any renters commission are just a few many of the many programs that we have founded for our for our city to make make sure that we maintain the vitality of our city and the person's quality of life. I've worked to ensure that whether you are a renter or a homeowner, we allocate the funding to provide real relief where it is needed. This year has been about addressing immediate needs over long term ones. I'm committed to ensuring that we are all, we all make it out of this crises with a fighting chance. Whether you're a small business owner, hospitality worker, or a restaurant worker, artist, renter, homeowner. I have created policies for funding specific to those who need it the most. As your local representative, I take this responsibility seriously. Local government is our city's first and last line of defense. Ensuring that there are policies in place that protect you is a task I do not take lightly. I will keep fighting for basic human rights and a real social safety net for all. Thank you.
Thank you. Let us move on to Laura Bustamante. Mr. Bustamante, speak to us for up to two minutes, please.
Yes, my name is Laura Bustamante. I'm an attorney here in San Antonio. I've served on the Edwards Aquifer and was elected to that position in the past, a very valuable experience. What I bring to the table is my 40 years of legal experience and and knowledge. I've lived in San Antonio all my life, in Texas, all my life. I I'm familiar with the problems, raised five children in the neighborhood. I've lived all over San Antonio. What my platform is simply health, renewable energy and education. I think health is a priority right now with COVID and also air quality, climate change. With the renewable energy, we need to solve the problem that that we had here in the past with the freeze and have everybody become energy independent. Education is is one of my key platform subjects. I believe that education, 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 and all these areas are key. We start with the one house at a time, one block at a time, one community at a time. And we teach the people to take advantage of all the benefits that the city has. I really believe in solar energy as a solution for renewable energy. As far as our health education is key, especially in our schools, right nutrition for our children and safety in our neighborhoods. Thank you for having me today and that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Our first question is what local and civic activities have you been active in? We will begin with Mr. Trevino.
Oh, well, I mean, I guess, you know, this is one of the the amazing things about being a council member is the opportunity to really get to know your city, get to know your your district. And so, you know, this is, this is one of those things that I think being a being active, being seen, being visible in the community is part of this role. And we've been a part of many, many efforts within the community with the many nonprofits as they push forward, you know, many initiatives. We work alongside a lot of housing advocates to help to protect people from the upcoming or looming eviction crises that that is is hanging over our heads. You know, understanding that that there are a lot of, there's a lot of activity happening in the city. Understanding which which one of those you want to be a part of so that you can understand what are the immediate needs? What is the emergency that is needed today is part of the work that we do every single day in my office. Aside from that, you know, we work hard to help develop some of these initiatives as well to help bring people together. We're focusing right now on social outreach. I just had a meeting yesterday with Amy Baby Ken and the amazing work that they do, but most people don't know the work that they do because they don't have the reach that they need. And so we're going to help create that network that begins with the social outreach specialists. They have one, there's many throughout different organizations. The problem is they're not all connected. And so we feel that this is the right approach in helping to bring people together, bring resources together that have always been disconnected. This has long been the criticism of how things seem to not function. But I believe that we're bringing people together to help us solve these issues and create that social safety net I was talking to.
Okay. And Mr. Bustamante, what local and civic activities have you been active in?
Well, I've been on the Edwards Aquifer in the past. That was a very valuable experience, learned a lot about water system in San Antonio, also the CPS system in San Antonio. Presently, I do a lot of pro bono work on an individual basis with people. I take many calls and I refer people to the different agencies that are available to them for free legal services. I've represented, like I've, and I've done this for past 40 years, representing people on a pro bono basis. So and I'm familiar with the downtown area. I've lived downtown in the past and and familiar with the homeless problem and the crime. And I've seen San Antonio evolve and also the need for education and the need to take care of our children in our schools. And also, I I looked at other venues, other organizations. And we have the answers to all our problems. We just need to get get those answers out to the to the people and have them accept the solutions in round. So thank you.
Okay. And Mario Bravo, what local and civic activities have you been active in, please? Mr. Bravo?
Sorry, I was on mute. Thank you. So I've been involved in a lot of activities here. I I I volunteered to serve on a working group to to develop the city's climate action and adaptation plan. The working group I was on was on buildings and energy, and we were specifically looking at how can we make buildings more energy efficient? Because Texas is dead last in the nation when it comes to energy efficiency in our buildings. That was one of the reasons why we really struggled to meet our energy needs during this winter storm. I also volunteered to serve on ACOG's Air Improvement Resources Advisory Committee, where I discovered that we don't, we didn't have an air quality monitor that could tell us what the air pollution was like on the far west side of San Antonio. And we know that we have disproportionate health impacts over there. And so I I helped advocate successfully to get an air quality monitor put on the west side of San Antonio. And of course, it's showing that the pollution exceeds the national standard right now. I also volunteered with Metro Health as a member of the the Alamo Area Medical Reserve Corps, you know, when when the pandemic first arrived in San Antonio, we put together an advisory committee of health professionals to advise us because, you know, politicians don't know what the best thing is to do when it comes to a pandemic. And so they gave us some advice and they said, look, in order to meet national best standards, we need to hire 175 people to work on tax, we seen investigation phone call program, and our city ignored them. And so when the COVID numbers were spiking, I I was volunteering with Metro Health to make phone calls, to find, to contact people who had been, who had tested positive for COVID, to ask them when they started experiencing symptoms, where they had been, who they had encountered, so that we would contact the people who they had been in close contact with and ask them to please quarantine immediately and get tested as soon as possible so we can slow the spread in our community. I also volunteered as the chair of a stakeholder.
Yeah, that's that's two minutes, Mr. Bravo. I believe we'll move on to the next question.
Thanks.
And for this next question, please answer within one minute. Mr. Bustamante first, what is your position on workforce training for the poor?
Absolutely. I think we have a lot of, a big need for skilled training and labor in San Antonio, so and and that's the key to to expanding our economy, and that is keeping people busy, keeping them active. And again, the key to this is education. We need to teach the people how to become independent. We need to give them jobs, simple jobs. As many things that that can be done, city programs, government programs, that we can take advantage to keep our, keep our homeless active and productive.
All right. And Mr. Bravo, what is your position on workforce training for the poor?
I absolutely support workforce training for for low income people. I think that we did a really poor job of designing the program that we have right now and its rollout. And, you know, I've talked to some leaders in the nonprofit community who work with people who could benefit from this program, and they tell me that the city didn't include them in developing this program and in the rollout. And so we really need to do, the city needs to do a better job of communicating with the people who have these needs and making sure that we are including them in the process, that they have access to these programs and that, you know, that that we are effectively rolling these programs out. And also, we need to make sure that, you know, is this program their biggest need right now in a pandemic? Or, you know, do they need direct aid right now? And I think right now we went too quickly into funding the workforce development when people need a direct aid just to survive. And, you know, then once people are stabilized, then we can work, transition into workforce development. So we need to do it more effectively.
Okay. And Mr. Trevino, what is your position on workforce training for the poor?
Well, thank you. As somebody that was raised by a single mother and has a lived experience around this, you know, what I can say is that workforce training is part of the larger puzzle. And wraparound services are really truly what's needed. As I mentioned in my opening, we want to address the emergency needs of today and not plan, put everything on planning for tomorrow. The biggest issue around the workforce planning is we put most of our money on workforce training. And I also disagreed with with that structure. I disagreed with the city overloading, creating the department that it's going to be bloated and and focused primarily or only on workforce training and not think about direct aid, think about eviction crises that's happening. And people who really are suffering in terms of how they can worry about or not worry about having a stable home. You've got to stabilize people at home. I live this, and this is why I didn't support the the workforce program that was not developed. It was not laid out before we even voted on it, put it on it. And of course, now we here we are, we're trying to focus on working on on designing the program. We were able to move $14 million out of workforce training to help create a worker relief program that is much needed. These are examples of how we can actually help people today.
Okay. And our next question is, what is your opinion about the fixed SAPD ballot proposition? Mr. Bravo?
Well, I think we absolutely need some more accountability. You know, everybody deserves to feel safe in their community. And I want to reward model police officers while making sure that we're holding the bad actors accountable. Under the current contract, that police contract that we have right now, we are not able to to hold the bad actors accountable. We've seen that, I think it was the Washington Post that that ran an article and they did a study and they found that we have the highest rate in San Antonio, police officers who we fire, who challenged the process through the contracts to get their jobs back and and successfully get their jobs back. And so there's just too many booby traps in that contract. It needs to be fixed. I'm really glad it's on the ballot and I really hope that the, you know, we're in contract negotiations right now. So the police officers have a, the Police Officers Association has a chance to fix this issue right now. And I, as I understand, we've come to a standstill on that topic, but we absolutely need reform in that regard.
Okay. And Mr. Trevino, what is your opinion of the fixed SAPD ballot proposition?
Thank you. Accountability is nonnegotiable. And if if you go to the fixed SAPD website, they they have outlined a great scorecard that that talks about the 10 issues that the community has brought up on accountability. Many of those are simply not being addressed. Only a few of those are actually being discussed in the contract negotiations. We, as a council office, are working hard to make sure that the city manager is aware of of our position, that we want all these, all 10 items to be addressed. One of the most important items in that contract is the evergreen clause, which basically says that, you know, that the if there's no, if there's an impasse in the negotiations, that the contract stays evergreen for at least eight years. We need to reduce that. There's just a lot of items that that need to be addressed. And I, and I think accountability is at the heart of it. So if you look at the the 10 items that the fixed SAPD is talking about, those things must be addressed, and that's my position.
Okay. And Mr. Bustamante, what is your opinion of the fixed SAPD ballot proposition?
Well, the bottom line in all this is is constitutional rights and human rights, due process. A lot of clauses, I really believe, are unconstitutional. They've got to be tweaked. They've got to come in line with the rest of the nation with the with the true meaning of the Constitution. So with my legal expertise, I think I can bring to the table, you know, a fair constitutional agreement. You know, that that is fair to everybody and protects everybody and especially the human rights. Discrimination has always been a problem and it will continue to be a problem. And we have the legal system to help us to provide us with due process and protection of human rights and and basically follow the constitutional amendments. So that's, that's, that's what I bring to the table, my 40 years of legal experience in this area. Thank you.
Okay. This next one, we will begin with Mr. Trevino. Mr. Trevino, should the COVID vaccine reservations be made available on a waiting list, or should we continue to have people compete for appointments?
We should have a list, and I was one of the few that supported creating that list. We're one of the only cities in Texas that does not have a list, and it doesn't make any sense to us. It this is one of those issues that I think has has really created additional anxiety that is that is not needed in our community. I've worked hard with with providing as much information to our community and on how they can access the vaccine, but, you know, the state keeps pushing for a centralized mass vaccination sites. I've worked hard with state representatives like Ina Miharis to push for decentralizing this and creating that waiting list so that we can better organize this. So we're focused on on trying to roll it out through as many, many outlets as possible. Recently just had a rollout with with a physician in District One to help provide the vaccine to teachers. And we will continue to do more to provide the vaccine as it starts to roll out. But I definitely believe that we should have a list, a waiting list, so that people can have an expectation. And I believe it will calm their anxiety.
All right. And Mr. Bustamante, should the COVID vaccine reservations be made available on a waiting list, or should we continue to have people compete for appointments?
No, they they should be on a waiting list, and the waiting list should include places like Walmart, CVS, Walgreens, doctors' offices, even even EMS stations. So we need to broaden the distribution of the vaccine and hopefully get to get everybody vaccinated. So we need to go, we need, we need to go where the people are. And, you know, either on an individual basis, on a block or a community. And they can, they can be on a list and they can, they can have, you know, walk-ins, you know, so. It should, it should be wide open. I think Biden has expressed that to have the vaccines widely distributed through pharmacies and civic organizations, even veterinarians can supply the vaccine. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Bustamante. And Mario Bravo, should the COVID vaccine reservations be made available on a waiting list, or should we continue to have people compete for appointments?
For me, this question is less about whether or not I believe that we should have a reservation list. You know, my approach is this is the people's government and a sizable amount of our citizens have been asking for waiting. And I believe that we need to do it for them. And it's not a matter of just me taking the position, yes, I support you. I would go and work with my colleagues on city council to get to a majority vote, so that way to direct the city manager to create that list. And I think it's important to be able to work with your colleagues at City Hall to be able to deliver the results for your community. I will also say that, you know, to go back to my volunteer experience, I volunteered on the very first day that we opened a vaccination site at the Alamo Dome. I was there in person handing vaccines to every doctor and nurse who was administering them. I would run them from the pharmacy to to the doctors and nurses. And I also recruited over 50 volunteers for that event because we had a very short amount of notice in order to stand up that the Alamo Dome for the mass vaccine distribution. And so over the weekend, right before it opened, I recruited over 50 volunteers to come and help make that event a success.
All right. Bob Miller, how much time do we have left in this segment? I forget when we started.
There's questions in the queue.
Yeah, we have about five minutes left.
Okay.
There's questions in the queue.
Yeah. Well, the question that I see is from one of our members who says the district includes a small sliver just north of Alamo Heights. How will you reach out to this neighborhood? And can we first hear from from Mr. Bustamante?
I'm sorry, what was the question again?
The district includes a small sliver just north of Alamo Heights. How will you reach out to this neighborhood?
Well, we do it on a, on a, on a open door policy. We have, you know, people come in and tell us their problems. We go out to the community on a door, you know, door to door basis, block to block, community to community. We just reach out. I mean, we, we, you know, surely they have city services and those city services can provide information and education to those so they can get their benefits. One of my peeves have been solar energy for for individuals. I think solar energy for individual housing is a solution to to the energy problem. And I think we can, we should do that. You know, a house at a time and then a block at a time, a community at a time. So we would, we would invite them to to come in and I would have an open door policy so they can express their issues. And also, I would travel out to the community physically expect the express their issues. And also, I would travel out to the community physically inspect the situation. Thank you.
Okay. And Mr. Bravo, same question about reaching out to that sliver north of Alamo Heights.
Well, it's not just that sliver. There are many areas, you know, that get overlooked. And I think you use every means possible, right? So there's a digital divide. You can't just communicate through social media and email. I think a great way to do that is telephone town halls. I've been a big proponent of organizing telephone town halls here in our community. And so that's one way where you can, you know, direct dial everyone, and when they pick up the phone, you can invite them to participate in a town hall meeting for your district right there over the phone. And then also, you know, traditional mail. And then there's going to be, you know, you can do outreach events such as coffees in the neighborhood where you can fly their doors ahead of time, let them know when you'll be there at a neighborhood park or a neighborhood coffee shop where they can come and meet with you as their representative, so you can listen to them and take their concerns to City Hall.
Okay. And Mr. Trevino, about reaching out to that sliver north of Alamo Heights?
Well, it's an interesting thing. You know, I've lived continuously in the district for over 21, 22 years, and I live near that area. So several things. Number one, I have breakfast there most weekends. We have done projects like affordable housing programs in that area that really is much needed. And in fact, I was just there last weekend, walking the neighborhood because we had a sidewalk project that we had just installed for the Alamo Heights School District. Most people don't know that that's a piece of the Alamo Heights School District. It is often overlooked, but I can assure you that my office does not overlook any sliver of property in the district. I've been proudly serving District One for six-plus years. We know the neighborhoods. We know every corner. In fact, we were able to move that sidewalk project I was mentioning. Our Public Works Department had it on one side, and we changed it to the other side of the street because we overlaid the bus route, and we showed how the bus route is on the opposite side, and the sidewalk should be on the side where the bus is. So kids don't have to be crossing the street to get to the bus from that sidewalk. It's understanding your neighborhood, understanding the district. I think I'm the only one that really understands it.
Okay. Let's see, there's a very quick one. Someone talking about air pollution. And they want to know whether you will commit to closing the Dirty Spruce Coal Plant by 2030 or earlier. Let's take at most 30 seconds each to answer this one. So, Mr. Bravo.
So I actually have a compromise plan that I, and I began, I used to be the chair of the CPS Energy Stakeholders Group. And so I am actually the only person running for city council in the entire city of San Antonio right now that has a track record of holding CPS Energy accountable, pushing through reforms when it comes to transparency and accountability. And I have begun discussions already with CPS Energy and how we can shut down that coal plant sooner and do it in a way where we can maintain affordability and be able to, at the same time, keep the lights on, especially when there's high demand.
Okay. And same question, Mr. Trevino?
Thank you for that question. I've had a longstanding partnership with CPS. We created the Urban Lighting Plan, which is so critical for us as a city. But additionally, I want to point out that, you know, I support closing down the coal plant, just not on the backs of poor and vulnerable people. This storm has taught us a lot about our infrastructure, has taught us a lot about the needs of those that are most vulnerable. So I will not support anything that does not have a clear plan, that does not raise rates on poor and vulnerable families.
Okay. And same question about closing down the coal plant, Mr. Bustamante?
Yes, I've always maintained that the answer is independent energy. There's communities in Texas that only use renewable energies. They don't use coal. They don't use gas. They only use renewable energy, wind, wind energy and solar energy. So I think the solution to closing down the coal plant is to become, to lessen the demand on coal and increase renewable energy, solar energy. I think we can provide incentives for homeowners to have solar energy and become energy independent. And I think, you know, that's the answer. And as far as for the workers that do.
That's more than 30 seconds, Mr. Bustamante. I'd like to be, I'd like to bring this to a close by asking each candidate to speak for 30 seconds to sum up, cover any second thoughts and like that. So can we begin with a summary from Mr. Trevino?
Thank you. I would only summarize by saying I am the candidate that is willing to speak up and speak out for those that typically don't have a voice in our community. I will continue to do that. I have a track record. I ask you to go to Trevino.org and to see all the programs that we have successfully accomplished. I have worked with many people, not just my colleagues, to get these policies done to protect our most vulnerable. That is the hallmark of my time as your city council member, and I hope to continue that work. Thank you.
Okay. Same question to Mr. Bustamante. Sum up, please.
Yes, we have the solutions to our problem. We need to apply them. My background is in human rights, due process, constitutional rights. And I think those have been the factors that have increased our quality of life. And we need to, we need to continue to have the human rights that we strive for. Thank you.
Okay. And finally, Mr. Bravo to sum up.
Thank you for this time. I want to bring a collaborative approach to City Hall. And so I want to work with you. It's not about my ideas. It's about the community's ideas. And I know that the communities can always have better ideas than what I come up with on my own. So I want to work with you, stay in communication with you, facilitate conversations, come to consensus, and then take those ideas to council and work with them collaboratively. Because we have to get to six votes. We have to be able to work with our other council members in order to pass policies and in order to implement them. And that's the approach that I want to take, and I appreciate your time.
Okay. Well, let me say thank you to all the candidates for attending this Zoom meeting with us. And Bob Miller, back to you.
Okay. Thank you, Ian. Thank you to all the candidates in District One. Really appreciate your having turned out today and giving us so many good insights.
Glenn needs the link, so I'm having to send him the link again right now.
Okay, fine.
So maybe go on with the other things.
Okay. Let's introduce our elected officials and candidates who are with us this morning. Judge Michael Mary, a very consistent attendee. Welcome, Judge.
Well, good morning, and it's a pleasure to be with all of you. I spoke to some of you before the meeting. We survived the great freeze. Alleluia. We got our $1.9 trillion bill passed. Alleluia. Biden looks like a president. Alleluia. And tonight, we're going to lose an hour. Don't forget to set your clocks one hour ahead. And thank you, God, for keeping us all going, no matter what. We're all going, and we're all together. I'm glad to be part of this community, and thank you all for all the trust you've put in me to enable me to serve. Thank you.
Thank you, Judge Mary. John Curry.
We love you, Judge.
Love you, Judge. John Curry.
Hey, thank you, Bob. I really appreciate, you know, a few moments to say hello to everybody. You know, you've just heard from three people who want to serve with me on the city council. Excuse me, I wish them all well. I'm in a tough race right now. I've got several people who would like to serve on the council and replace me. But I think that I've done a good job acting on behalf of everybody in this city. You know, it's one thing to say you represent a council district. It's something else to realize that every decision we make downtown at City Hall, one way or another, affects the lives of everybody in our community. And I feel like even though I represent north-central part of the city, which is usually considered one of the most conservative parts of town, I've tried to do it with an open mind and an open heart, listening to everybody who lives in our district, but everybody who lives in the community and shares all of the responsibilities and the challenges that this community has. And I want to continue doing that. But it takes the support of not just people who live in the city, in my community, I should say, but people who live throughout the city that want to see a continuation of good, fair, honest, open government. And that's what I've tried to provide, and that's what I want to continue to provide for all of us. You know, and we're having, we're having great results so far. I've had some volunteers who've been calling. And, you know, people have been saying, yeah, we support John, or hey, we'd like to have a sign in our yard. As a matter of fact, we've just had to order more yard signs. A lot of you know, Cole Osborne's been helping in my campaign, and he's done a phenomenal job. But we've still got six more weeks of hard work ahead of us. My opponents have the money. They've been working hard as I have. So I would just like to ask any of the N E B C D members, first of all, support the candidate in your district that you think should be your representative on the council. But I'll also ask, if you don't live in District Nine, but you get a little bit of extra time, volunteer to help with some calling, or maybe an afternoon dropping off some literature for us, or at the very least, making a financial contribution that'll allow us to have more people doing this kind of work. And just remember, and this is so true, I'm just your neighbor on the city council. And I just want to advocate for the people in my district and the people throughout this community who need good, open, honest, and fair representation. And I thank you for all the past support you've ever given me, and I'm looking forward to laughing liberally. Thanks, Bob.
Thank you, John. Thank you, John. Okay. Let's move right along. I do encourage everyone to, particularly those of us who live in District Nine, to give John our full support. He's got some well-financed candidates running against him, and we really need him to remain on the council. Okay. I believe that Glenn Maxi is with us this morning. And I invited him just a moment ago. Glenn, are you there? Are you, are you muted?
I'm right here.
There you are. Hey, great. Welcome, welcome. Glenn Maxi, who's a longtime activist with the Texas Democratic Party, a former member of Texas Legislature. And, you know, he talked to us about what's going on in the legislature this time, which is, oh, it's Republican. Boy, oh, boy. Glenn Maxi.
Hello, everybody. I'm glad to be with you. As Bob said, you know, I've been around for a long time doing democratic work. I am attempting to retire from the Texas Democratic Party because I'm about to hit that 70th birthday. And I promised myself I wouldn't still be doing this stuff as a job after I turned 70 years old. So I'm trying to get out the door. And so my, one of my last projects is for the last four legislative sessions, I've been working with the Democratic Party as our legislative director, specifically focused on elections and party affairs legislation. Let me just say that the this is going to be one of the most challenging election cycles, legislative sessions in a long, long time for us. The fact that the change in national politics, the change in state politics, and the fact that the Democratic Party is on the cusp of becoming a dominant party in Texas again, has got the Republicans, just, let's just say, a little bit on the edge. And Texas is not immune to what's happening nationally. I posted on Facebook last night just a point that I'm very, very frustrated of watching national TV news, all the cable TV folks, and seeing them use now for weeks the same storyline saying that the voter suppression activities of the Republican Party across the nation, and I keep saying, there's 243 anti-voting bills, voting suppression bills filed in 43 states. 253 in 43 states or something like that. They are so out of time and out of date because I think that we have probably a good, I haven't counted them, since the bill filing was over at 6 o'clock yesterday, and I've just, I was up till real late just trying to get all the bills into a data thing so we can analyze what's been filed. But there's probably at least 60 or 70, I mean, there's, as usual, about 300 bills focused on elections filed. There is about 70 of them that are in some way harmful to what we do as a party to register and turn out voters. And there, this session, there is, let's just say, when behind their sails, they see what's going to happen perhaps nationally, and they are doing everything possible. Governor Abbott made election integrity. Integrity is a very nebulous word in the world of elections. Election integrity as an emergency item. He has put it as a priority, and clearly the legislature has it as a priority. You know, we don't have the votes in the House or the Senate to to really stop things. So we have to depend on the kindness of some moderate Republicans to try to sort of roll back the most egregious stuff. So the two gubernatorial passed or monickered bills were always saved. Bill numbers that are very low, so you're going to hear of House Bill 6 in the House and House Bill 7 in the Senate. The Elections Committee in the Senate is chaired by Brian Hughes. He is the same guy that, from East Texas, that sponsored Senate Bill 9 last session, which was the big bad bill that we were able to kill. Senator Hughes is, has his bill, which is Senate Bill 7, and in the House, we have a nine-member committee, five Democrats, I mean, four Democrats and nine Republicans. Briscoe Kane, who is one of the leaders of the Texas Freedom Caucus, which is the sort of the right-wingers in the House, the crazy caucus, is the chair of elections. His most recent claim to fame is that he was one of the attorneys that went to Pennsylvania to help litigate and to turn over the Pennsylvania election, if you just recently recall that. He is a true believer. Surprisingly, of House Bill 7 and House Bill 6, Mr. Kane is, has lots of voter, what they're calling voter integrity issues. And I'll get into some examples of all this stuff in just a bit. But one of them, but they're all process things. They're not as much just outright keeping people to vote. Senate Bill 7 has in it a lot of the process things that, you know, to make elections more safe. You know, but it also has some outright, some of the things that are problematic in the world of elections. So let me just jump into the examples of all this stuff. We don't, well, let me just, let me say upfront, in the House, on that House Committee, House Committee, uh, the four Democrats that are on there are, uh, Democrat Jessica Gonzalez, who's the Vice Chair, uh, John Bucy from Williamson County, uh, Jessica Gonzalez is from Dallas, John Bucy from, uh, Williamson County, who is a real warrior on this, on our, on our team, uh, second session. Um, and then we have, um, Art Fierro from El Paso, and, um, why am I going blank here? Um, for some reason, I'm going blank on the fourth member. Oh, uh, it'll come to me in a second. That's why, see, that's why I need to require, you know, I can't remember somebody's name. Um, but the key on the, on the, on the Republican side of the House Committee, House Election Committee, is a guy named Representative Clardy from Smith County in Tyler. Uh, he is a moderate Republican, um, you know, not, not that almost any of them in the Texas House these days are moderate, um, but he is rational and reasonable on this stuff, and, um, he is going to be key in keeping the really bad stuff from coming out of the committee. And, you know, he has helped us in the, in the last several sessions on the floor, when there have been amendments in the Republicans, uh, on, on election stuff, uh, he has brought together the, the 10 or so Republicans we've needed to, to kill bad legislation on the floor. So we will, we were going to depend on him a lot, um, we won't put that out into the ozone because we don't want him to get beat up because he will get beat up by the Republican base, but, um, we're hopeful he'll be helpful. So, everything that you can imagine has been filed in Texas. There are some of the most bizarre voter suppression kinds of things, uh, you can imagine. And one of their big focuses, or let me step back, uh, I also have to say that perhaps one of the biggest achievements of my political career at the Texas Democratic Party was the, uh, access to voter in, in 2020 that I helped usher in across the state of Texas. And so I sort of look at what's been filed in many ways, uh, as saying how well we did on this because they're coming after us. Uh, and that is the expansion of access to voting. Um, and one of the counties that's had the worst voting opportunities was Harris County in 2020 under Chris Holland, the Vice Chair of the Texas Democratic Party, uh, who became the election clerk, uh, by appointment. Um, Chris took, uh, Harris County into the ozone of opportunities to, uh, expand voting, um, in doing things like having voting hours into the evening, doing some overnight voting, having drive-through voting, expanding the number of early vote locations to, by three or 400, I mean, Election Day by three or 400 early vote locations. So he did a lot of creative things. Um, Bear County did some creative things. I mean, having the super center, you know, at the, at the stadium, those kinds of opportunities. They have taken direct aim at all of the voter expansion kinds of things that we did across the state. And so their, the Republican thrust is, uh, for the most part, to make election-
I don't understand the thing you're saying.
I'm sorry. Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
All right. So they're focused on making elections uniform across the state. Um, and the way that they're doing that is giving the, uh, in, in many of these proposals is giving the Secretary of State the authority, uh, to make the way that elections conducted the same from county to county. So our Democratic Commissioners Courts and Democratic Election Administrators and Clerks won't have as much leeway. So I expect to see that they will, um, push that voting is from seven to seven in every county, no voting after seven. I know, I thought, don't y'all now go to eight o'clock? Y'all have early voting till eight. Um, so, um, they're going to try to standardize that across the state of Texas. Um, they are, uh, they see in, in urban areas, um, well, let's just, some administrative things, uh, things like across the state of Texas right now, uh, election judges are appointed, there is a Democratic judge and a Republican alternate in precincts that's Democrats carry, there's a Republican judge with a Democratic alternate judge in the precincts that, um, Republicans carry. What's happened is in all the urban areas, as we have done better and better, uh, we have, um, many more Democratic election judges in the county, the, uh, counties of Texas, that the election judge hires all of the clerks. Uh, so they're doing some things like, uh, saying that the alternate judge now is going to have the authority to hire half of the clerks. In other words, if a precinct now has a Democratic judge, Republican alternate judge, uh, the Democratic judge might be hiring five or six people to work, they'll all be Democrats. Now, half of those will be Republicans because the alternate judge will be able to name them. Now, these kinds of things that they're doing have a two-edged sword. Um, while they will take away some of our power and our authority in administering elections, uh, in urban areas, it's a godsend to counties like Atascosa or Medina, uh, counties that have gone Republican at the top of the ticket, uh, with all Republican judges, now Democrats will be clerks, uh, have clerks there because the alternate judge will be able to hire them. Um, in the area of mail balloting, you know, we have bills filed, uh, there's probably at least 30 or 40 bills filed to roll back, um, mail balloting. Um, and, uh, the most onerous thing that is filed that's in Senate Bill Seven, uh, which is a bill, you know, sponsored by the chairman, which is Dan Patrick's priority bill, uh, the biggest, uh, difficulty on mail balloting in that bill is the issue of, uh, the right of a person with a disability to vote. Uh, disabled Texans right now, any, anybody who wants to vote by mail by reason of disability, just check a box and, uh, they get a ballot. Uh, and the law is such that, uh, the voter makes the determination whether they have a, a condition, um, whether, that prevents them from going to vote. Um, they are proposing to flip that on its head and say that two things, A, that the vote voter has to sign an affidavit on the application, you know, under penalty of perjury, that they have a condition that prevents them from walking into the polling place without harm to their health or to another's harm. So A, just that suppression of having a voter who might say, oh, I have a bad heart, uh, I probably shouldn't stand in line for a long time, but, you know, I'm not going to sign an affidavit saying that I can't go to vote, um, therefore, I'm not going to vote by mail. And then they end up not going at all. But the bigger piece of this is they're going to require anybody with a disability to have to have a doctor's signed statement, a piece of paper with a doctor's signature, um, which is going to be really, really difficult for almost any disabled person. I mean, uh, you decide to vote, uh, during early voting, you know, try calling a doctor and getting a, a appointment within, you know, a day or two so that you can go get a note till you can go vote. Uh, it will significantly, uh, harm folks. Now, the other thing, that, that's in the primary bill, Lieutenant Governor's primary bill that Brian Hughes is carrying. But as I said, there's about 50 other bills on early voting, everything from, uh, lots of signature match things, different ways to do signature matches, uh, requirements to put unique identifiers on ballots and, and applications, uh, to match them up, um, you know, just a lot of other steps, adding a step or two. Right now, we send an mail ballot application out and a voter just simply has to sign it because we've pre-printed on it everything that you would have to check off. I'm over 65. I, you know, I'm asking for an annual ballot, the date of the election. So the voter didn't have in the blanks. So there are proposals doing things like, A, uh, one that will definitely pass, not allowing the election administrator or any county, you know, the county commissioners in Harris County and the clerk mailed applications to all the seniors. Uh, El Paso mailed applications, Webb mailed applications to all seniors, uh, that were already filled out, they just needed to sign. So they did, they did really proactive stuff to allow seniors to vote. So they're going to prohibit county governments to mail applications to anybody. A voter has to get them themselves. There are some members have bills that prohibit the Democratic and Republican Party or a candidate from mailing an application to anybody. You know, it leaves it to the voter, to their own devices to figure out how to get that form in their hands. Um, there are bills that require, um, uh, you see where we're going with this, just craziness. Um, uh, bills requiring witnesses, bills requiring, lots of bills requiring people to make a Xerox copy. You've heard a lot about the bill in Georgia where they're telling people to have to make a Xerox copy of their, um, ID and put it in with their ballot application. Uh, we have five or six bills on that. Um, you know, now I'm hopeful that we can keep those really draconian things out in Texas, but there will be limits on mail balloting. Uh, excuse my cat. Um, uh, and so that's going to be very, very difficult. There's a lot of stuff about access of poll watchers. We had very aggressive Republican battle, uh, ballot security folks across the state this last time, um, so they are really making it much easier for poll watchers. Um, once again, this is a two-sided one because we had an agri, started doing an aggressive poll watching, uh, and so it'll be helpful to us too. There's lots of things about, um, the processes of counting ballots, uh, with access to poll watchers, there's some bills requiring videoing of central counting, some requiring central counting to have cameras on everything that happened. Um, uh, there are lots and lots of list maintenance bills. We will see these for sure pass, and it's just how, how, how much due process we give. Uh, lots of things of taking data files of everything from Homeland Security, of any known list of an undocumented person in Texas, and comparing it to the voter registration list and removing those people that match. Uh, same thing with matching all driver's license voter registration with voter registration and doing matches and finding people, um, and removing them if, if they are not in, in, I mean, there, there are bills such as, uh, right, and lots of things of anybody who has a possible, uh, problem on a mail ballot, uh, anybody who's registered to vote that might be an undocumented person, they all get referred to the Secretary of State and to the Attorney General. Uh, in fact, one of the bills that has some legs is saying that in comparing jury wills, uh, when, when jury wills are sent out, jury lists are sent out, they go out to registered voters and people with driver's licenses. Uh, when people get those, uh, you, those of you who've gotten a jury summons, uh, remember that there are boxes to check. I have a small children, I'm not a citizen, I've moved out of the county, and checking one of those boxes gets you out of jury duty. There are actually lots of people who check, I'm not a citizen, thinking, oh, I'll just mark this and then I won't have to go. Well, now, if you mark, I'm not a citizen on jury summons, that will be, get you referred to the Attorney General and get you removed from the voter list, uh, and, you know, there is a, you know, send a confirmation letter to the person, but your name's still going to go to the Attorney General for investigation. However, they also, uh, are doing some really draconian things like anybody that move, puts on a jury list that they have moved out of the county, right now, when that comes back to the district clerk, it goes to the voter registrar and a confirmation letter is sent. Actually, within that means a letter saying, well, you know, we think that you moved from the county, here's a voter registration application to re-register in your new county, uh, and if the person has 60 days to return that and say, no, I, I still am in the county, but if they're not, they go on the suspense list. And, you know, they stay there for then four years before they're removed, and as long as they go to vote and re-register, they're going to stay on the list. So now there are proposals to remove those people immediately if they move, and secondly, refer them to the Attorney General, uh, as if somebody who simply moves out of the county has done something criminal. Um, so it's a, a very, very, I'm going to, I, I, I'm, I'm rattling, and I could go for like, a, a long time here. Uh, the, the silver linings, there's a couple silver linings that we will, I believe, get out of this stuff, very few. Um, one of the things for sure is that, you know, we have lots of Democratic bills around, uh, adding, permanently adding places to drop off your mail ballot was hugely popular with Democrats and Republicans for the security of, of being able to drop your bo, your ballot off. Um, they're going to go full bore not to allow that to happen at all, um, and to remove the ability of anybody to drop a ballot off. Um, uh, the, um, I lost my train of thought here. Um, I, I'm going to take questions perhaps. I've seen Al Kistling-
Yeah, Al Kistling. Unmute yourself, Al. And, and mute yourself, Al.
Al, he's still muted.
Am I clear now? Yeah.
When does this take effect?
Nothing happens before the May 1st election. But what does it mean before the, uh, 2022 election, these bills will pass?
Can you, people understand him?
Yeah, but he's asking if, uh, when will these new laws take effect if they pass? If it will be before the 2022 election?
It will be before, yeah, everything becomes effective September of this year, so they'll all be in place for this year. So since you asked a question about 2022, let me just, let me just go make a detail before I take questions and, and talk a little bit about redistricting. Um, as y'all know, the Trump administration, uh, can't use any word other than fucked it up with the census. And of course, we don't have census data, should have been here in March, um, we should have learned in, in January how many congressional seats we get in Texas, and then the precinct level, uh, or, uh, voter district level information should have been here, uh, in late March. voter district level information should have been here in late March. That's not ready. We thought it was going to be ready in July and now the census data, Census Bureau has said, and in the Biden administration has said, it's not coming until at least September. Our filing deadline for offices and have districts drawn under Texas situation is of course, middle of November is when the filing deadline starts. So there is no way that we will have legislative districts this fall. Already, there's big questions about who's drawing these lines since the Texas Constitution says if the legislature doesn't do it in the first session after the census, then it goes to the Legislative Redistricting Board. Clearly, the legislature is not going to do it in the first session. And, you know, there's still a question, is the census complete? So are we past it? So does the constitutional thing jump in to say that the Texas Legislature does redistricting in twenty twenty three and not at all for this cycle? That is a possibility. More likely, the courts will rule that they can do it in special session and overrule the Constitution, a federal court would. There's going to be a lot of litigation around this. But you can count on it right now that we will not have a March primary. Count on it. I would expect that the primary is going to be at the earliest in May with the runoff in July. We don't, we don't really know about any of that. There are all kinds of bills filed yesterday about giving the governor and the lieutenant governor and the speaker the power to move the primary by order so that they can set it to wherever redistricting gets done. That's there's a lot of feeling against having that happen because the governor then is, I mean, the governor might have a primary opponent and he might be more in the mood of doing a snap election as quickly as there, you know, we can do it. There are proposals to split the primary that we have the regular primary in March for county officials and statewide officials and then have a legislative primary and congressional primary and commissioners, I guess, since commissioners courts have to be redistributed. Anything that's redistributed in a later, you know, so splitting these into two different primaries. There's all kinds of craziness, but so buckle your seat belts around that.
Did I have, okay, Tony Bosie, you have a question. Unmute yourself.
Yes, we have had a problem in Bear County of precinct chairs and other party office candidates voting in or running in districts in which they do not reside. And I myself was a complainant of record in one of these cases. There were a number that came out of the county. And while while someone from the Attorney's General's office did investigate, I see no enthusiasm for enforcing residency requirements on the part of candidates. Do you think there's any possibility that a reform can be made so that the law is actually enforced in that regard?
The Republicans have some bills for that. Yes, there, there are a lot of bills around that. Keep in mind, I, I think y'all situation where these people were not even registered to vote in the were they registered to vote in the precinct where they ran?
No.
Yeah, see, that clearly, you know, shouldn't have happened at all. But residency, let's talk about it at thirty thousand feet. Residency under Texas law is a state of mind. We have lots of candidates who decide to run in a district and go rent an apartment. So they live someplace, their kids are going to school. They have a homestead exemption, they're whatever at one location, but they now just rent an apartment six months before the elections, meet the residency under the length of time to be there and now call themselves a resident. We have probably four or five state representatives right now who do not sleep in their districts. As primary director statewide and in every county party, every election, we go through the hassle of somebody running for constable or JP, I mean, seems to always be constables who shop for a district to run in by just going and, you know, registering at their mom's house, registering at a friend's house while they still live somewhere else.
Yeah, we had that too. Often they register at a place of business.
Yeah, and so there, there are a bunch of bills to try to deal with that. Basically saying that, you know, where you sleep is your registration for being a candidate. It's not touching the issue of where you registered to vote. There are a lot of voters who you know, make decisions about what their voting residency is going to be, especially people who, and then doesn't hurt a lot of our voters, but there's certainly richer people who own two homes and you know, might have a home in San Antonio and have one in Matagorda County with a beach house and they decide that they're in the spring or at the beach, so they choose their beach house as their residency to vote. Those kinds of people are not being affected by most of this legislation, but there are numerous bills around residency. You know, and there's a the answer to your question about nobody has the wherewithal to go prosecute. This is one of the big bugaboo's we have right now in almost all of this voter suppression, voter integrity stuff. There are, once again, dozens and dozens of bills that raise the penalty for doing anything that's considered voter fraud from misdemeanors to felonies to just raise penalties. And as we know, just putting a, raising, most people committing these fraud, these kind of voting things have no clue what the penalty is. I mean, they're not, they don't know whether it's a just don't catch me if you can, or whether you're, the death penalty. The voters or the people who do this typically aren't looking at the penalty. So it is not the kind of thing that using a penalty stops voter fraud. The reason of raising a lot of the penalties is because the Attorney General and the Republicans can't get any district attorneys or county attorneys around the state of Texas to spend any great amount of time or or money to prosecute a case like a precinct chair not went living in their district. Nobody's going to prosecute that, even if it was, you know, a misdemeanor to do that. They're not going to do it because they just say we have bigger fish to fry on violent crimes and property crimes and things to do. And so prosecuting fraud is a real challenge. And so the Republicans just want to make it bigger and bigger penalties. We're going to see, in, in, in all of this, the, the now bells and whistles that they're trying to do for vote by mail, for voter registration, they're criminalizing, you know, putting down incorrect information on a voter registration application or putting incorrect information down on a, you know, and they're calling it fraud. We know, those of us, we've been around, we've been doing elections. We know how uneducated or naive the typical voter is about these things. And, you know, somebody not knowing that they can't register at at a business, for instance, and, and, I mean, at a post, a post office box, for instance, could put that on there. And now, under some of these laws, they will get referred for investigation to the Attorney General. So there's a lot of stuff here that are going to criminalize simple voter errors. You know, a voter putting a wrong birthday on, on it by mistake on a vote by mail application that said, that they put down in, in right the wrong year, could get them referred to somebody for prosecution. Now, I doubt that anybody's going to get prosecuted from that, about that. But, you know, most of us did doubt that Crystal Mason in Fort Worth could get prosecuted. Y'all don't know that case. It's been sort of the Attorney General's poster case of a woman who was, had a felony, was on probation, believed that when they told her she was now out of, you know, that she was out of, out of prison and she was now on probation, she believed or thought innocently. I use that term, no pun intended here. She thought that she could now, because she was out of prison, register to vote. So she registered to vote. And I don't remember why, but she ended up even asking the question and the election judge told her to vote a provisional ballot if she was unsure, she voted a provisional ballot. Crystal Mason is serving eight years in the Texas Department of Correction for that honest mistake. And these are the kind of people that happen to be black or Hispanic or poor who are going to get caught up in these dragnet kinds of things of accidentally doing something when all of these new things are being added of boxes you need to check or pieces of paper you need to supply to register to vote, you know. We have legislation actually requiring everybody to bring proof of citizenship and attach it, you know, so you have to copy, have a a certified copy of your birth certificate, Xerox, to attach that to your voter registration application. Things that'll make voter registration stop.
Okay, the, the hour is a bit late. And we have really been well informed by you, Glenn Maxi. And really appreciate your having joined us this morning and answering, answering our questions. Let's give a round of applause to Glenn Maxi for having joined us this morning and provided such great information.
Let me, let me stop with one thing.
Okay.
Everybody here needs to make sure you do everything in your power to tell every congressman you have, one or more, the friends you don't, that aren't in your district in Bear County. We have got to pass HR one and SR one and HR four. That is the Voting Rights Act and the expansion of voting. All of this bullshit is going to be solved by passing the Federal Voting Rights Act and this bill that requires mail ballots, requires automatic and same day and online registration. And takes all of this stuff out. So we have the power. While we have this, the Democratic majority, the filibuster can be reformed and they can do it just for voting rights. It would be a simple thing just to change the Senate rules. And that's what I think will happen. We'll see. Maybe some part of the filibuster staying, but they're going to get enough that we can get this bill through. We've got to do this because we are going to have some really draconian stuff. We are going to lose the House, the US Senate, and be permanently a minority party in Texas if the Republicans do everything that they think they're going to do in voter suppression this, this session. So it's, it looks bleak, but there is a silver lining out there. So thank y'all for having them this morning. And I'm sorry I was a little late, Madeline, and give you
That's okay.
heart palpitations.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to return to the agenda. I will
Are you muted, Bob? We can't hear you.
Okay, I will, I will share the minutes of the previous meeting. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Some moved. Some moved.
Second.
Okay, moving to second it. All those in favor? What are your actions and Mark, yes or no, excuse me, maybe raise your hand. If you can't find the yes, no function.
I have one hand and thirteen, twelve, eleven check marks.
Okay.
Do we have
The voting function is
Quorum here is
Yeah, pardon me.
Do we, are we in, do we have quorum or do we not?
Quorum is ten members that we are
Okay, all right.
Okay, Ed approved. Okay. Let's move on to
We have some hands up for some reason. Are people still voting? Is that what your hands up for? Is that a question? Let me, I'm going to remove all of them. Okay, clear all the feedback.
Okay. All right. Let's see, Brian, did, did the bank get you set up yet?
I still am trying to get online access, but I appreciate that you're sending over through March the eighth, the bank summary of deposits and, and expenses. So I do have, I do have that number to report as of March the eighth. The balance was twenty-nine thousand, one hundred and twenty-six dollars, which is six thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars more than the balance as of the last meeting. And I believe, I was a little bit tardy getting back to an email from Madeline. She's going to mail me some, some forms, some donation forms. And I believe in her email, she mentioned that she was going to be making another hundred and ten dollar deposit, which was not reflected as of, as of Monday. And that's
I had mailed those forms. You should have gotten them.
Oh, okay.
Bob gave me the address.
Oh, okay, great. I'll be on look at, they haven't shown up as of yesterday. So, okay. And that's really all I have for right now.
Okay, on Act Blue, there are a couple of famous from Act Blue, outstanding. I can't remember what the previous one wanted, but the pending is about a thousand dollars that have been contributed through Act Blue, which we will be giving them next week. And a check. So you seem to be in pretty good shape. Probably on, on that, we have something like thirty-two thousand dollars, including the outstanding checks.
I had a question about, for Madeline, did we ever get our deposit back from the place that we were raised?
Yeah, that's been deposited.
Yeah, I set that out. I guess you didn't see it. Okay, moving right on. Thank you so much, Brian. It's the, and Zach isn't here and I don't really have much to say. Let's move on to budget and finance, which is, is David and me and Brian. I guess the best we can say is that we're in pretty good shape financially and all of the finances appear to be in good order. Our promotional events are, are going well and well, while perhaps not quite as lucrative as last year, lacking liberally, probably return us, return us a net exceeding eight thousand dollars. And, okay, and then we'll go on to campaigning candidate recruitment. Ian and Tony?
I don't, I think that for the time being, the, the forum we just had was our main focus. So I don't have anything in addition to that. So I don't have anything in addition to that.
Great. I do want to emphasize that we really do need to turn out to support John Courage and Ezra Johnson and the other endorsed candidates and for city council. Okay, communications. Sandy?
Okay, I guess Martha's not here today, so I will. And we are on track for the promotions for Laughing Liberally, March eighteenth. We will be, you know, sending out, we regularly send out emails and notices every three days to let people know all of the sponsorships. Sponsorships are still open, but all the ad spaces is no longer, it's filled. And we're setting up the transmission of the event on our website and on YouTube. And could also, I'll have to set it up for Facebook. The, we had a meeting with the team that is doing our new website. They have been working within wix.com, excuse me. And, and so also this weekend, they're going to be copying and pasting over many of the things that we already add to our current email, our current website. We expect to see something more solid as the, as the weeks roll in. The projected date for the website was somewhere around April, April fifteenth. And. Yeah, so April fifteenth will be a beta version. And then. So that is where we're at right now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Moving on, invested fundraising. Ian?
Yes, so write this down. This coming Thursday at seven o'clock, open your computer, go to Facebook or N E B C D dot org. Click on Laughing Liberally. This is going to be the best, the funniest stress reliever with Roy Zimmerman. And he's the guy that wrote those really funny songs, Vote Him Away, Vote Him Away, Vote Him Away, Vote Him Away. That guy, you know, and he's got new stuff for us. It's going to be really fun. And so that is what I want to remind everybody to do. Our committee has been really putting a lot of effort into this. It's really from beginning to end, it's going to be a lot of fun. So. This, just remember this, this week.
All right.
And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, Thursday, March eighteenth. Pardon me? All right, okay. Martha's not here this morning. So membership, Maybell?
Yes, as of today, there are two hundred and ninety-nine. There's minus eighty-six members that have lapsed through this month of March. So the total is two hundred and thirteen.
Thank you, Maybell. Precinct organization, John?
Good morning, everybody. Ian, that was just a great forum. Thanks so much for doing that. I was really impressed with those guys. We have a lot going on precinct organization. First of all, we have three hundred and one precinct chairs in Bear County, even after a lot of precinct chairs decided to vacate their positions over the last couple of months. So it's always nice to be over that three hundred mark. We have eleven new applications to be approved this month. And we had thirteen that we approved last month, so we have momentum. Also, we have twenty-eight coordinators right now and there's one new application to be approved this month. As far as precinct chair recruitment efforts is concerned today, as we speak, there's one going on in County Commissioner Precinct Three, Gina Sanz of all is our wonderful deputy chair that she organized and we are hustle texting all of the volunteers that we identified last summer to find some precinct chairs in twenty-five or so critical precincts that have high Democratic turnout, but no precinct chair. So the process is actually Sonia Miles and Susan Corwell are not on this call right now because they're busy hustle texting these people. This afternoon, we're going to take a look at everybody who said they're interested and get some data on them. And then tomorrow in Gina's meeting, we're going to spend our time calling these people and trying to convince them to become precinct chair. So we're very excited about that, about that, that project. We are also now out block walking for the election, the May first election. Ezra Johnson is walking with precinct chair this morning in forty-one, twelve. Jalen McKee Rodriguez in precinct two will be walking with some precinct chairs. Among other activities going on across town. But the key here is I want to say we're out block walking. We are knocking on doors again. We're talking to voters. I've been to about thirty houses in my neighborhood in the last couple of weeks and that's going just fine. So we're back to block walking. Yay, hooray. The last thing I'd like to say is that save the day precinct chairs and coordinators because on the weekend of March twenty-seventh to twenty-eighth, the Bear County Democratic Party will be having its twenty-two campaign kickoff. It's going to be a conference style Zoom meeting. Providing five out of our six training classes during the weekend. There will be opening and closing remarks by candidates. Joe Jaworski, for example, is going, who's running for Attorney General is going to give our closing remarks. The guy's awesome to listen to. And we hope everybody will attend the conference and a lot more details will be coming out and you guys will all get a precinct chairs and coordinators, you'll all get a notification this week about it. So that's pretty much what I have to report. If anyone has any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Any questions? Okay, thank you, John.
I did ask him in the chat to send me the list of all the new precinct chairs and coordinators, their contact information. I do send out an invite to all of the precinct chairs for, to our meetings. And we would definitely want, especially for something like having Glenn Maxi here. We want them to be available to hear what's going on from the state.
Great. All right, I don't believe we have any unfinished business. Ida May on our agenda for new businesses endorsement of city council candidate.
I would like to, I would like to endorse Mario Bravo.
Okay, there's, there's a. Mario Bravo has been nominated.
District one, I am a district one voter, by the way.
I'll second.
Moving and second, there's a nomination in the second, Mario Bravo. Is there a nomination for any other candidate for district one?
Yes. I would like to nominate our present city council member, Robert Trevino.
Okay, move to nominate and seconded for Robert Trevino. Okay, any other nominations? Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Nominations are closed. We have nominations for Mario Bravo and Roberto, Robert Trevino. Okay, this is not an exclusive, but I don't see any non-members present as a matter of fact, so we're good. All those would prefer to have Mario Bravo as the endorsed candidate. Raise your hand. Excuse me, Mr.
Can we have, can we have a discussion, some discussion?
Yeah, absolutely.
I'm sorry, forgot that part.
I would like to speak in favor of Mario Bravo.
Okay.
Robert Trevino has been very good in certain things and progressive, but he's been extremely negative in some of the business things that he's done. He is part of what he endorsed getting, he spends his time and energy downtown and for the business community. And he is part of the group that got Hemisphere taken out of the taxpayers' purview and into a incorporation, which does not allow us to vote on what happens. He was, he was major factor in a boutique hotel, getting a seven million dollar bonus for getting a prime piece of property in the Hemisphere thing for a boutique hotel that should have sold for many, many millions of dollars, not for a bonus, a taxes incentive. It's his, his support of the business community against the, the, the support for the majority of voters has been a problem with Robert Trevino. Mario Bravo has been an active Democrat who has done many, many things for the people of San Antonio and Democratic causes for many, many years. So that's what I have to say.
Okay, and is there one who would like to speak in favor of Robert Trevino?
I would.
Okay, I.
Well, I am a district one resident, have been for over twenty years. Although one, I wasn't always in one in my present residence, but I have been since. Councilman Trevino has been our councilperson. And I guess I look to my councilperson to be responsible to me and my needs in my little community world here. And he has been exceedingly responsive. He helped me with a traffic light in a very dangerous intersection and went back again to help when we needed a turn arrow at that traffic light. I, I won't go into all the reasons why I needed to contact him during the storm, but I did on behalf of two hundred and fifty residential apartments. And he got back to me within fifteen minutes. He responded to my email and had his chief of staff on the issue. And this was, you know, in the middle of this storm. And I don't know how many people have that kind of response, but it has been wonderful and he has been responsive. And I would like to have him continue to be my councilperson. And I hope that you will keep that in mind when you think about an individual councilperson.
Tony Blazey?
Yes, both Mr. Bravo and Mr. Trevino were polite enough not to mention for some of us, what is an elephant in the room. And that is, Mr. Bustamante had been widely reported in the press some years back of engaging in bizarre personal conduct, which led, among other things, to his being disbarred as an attorney. And so I, in general, I favor the two motions to endorse. And I assume that many of us know why not to endorse Mr. Bustamante, but in case there's anybody here that doesn't, feel free to ask me on the side. Thank you.
I like to speak to one of the candidates. Yes, I like to keep this germane to the candidate's name that before us. I speak in favor of Mr. Mario Bravo. The man indicated to me that he's very knowledgeable about issues in this town. He's energetic and he thinks outside of the box. He's not a carbon copy of what you normally see at City Hall, at least from my point of view. When they asked him about serving the people in district one, he indicated that he would invite the people to assist. He understands that the people are ultimately in charge, that he isn't. So he made that point. So he seemed to be the kind of individual that we need at City Hall. There's nothing wrong with the incumbent. I'm not here to disparage him in any way, but I am here to speak for someone that I think would do a very, very good job and who sorely needed in San Antonio. Thank you.
Thank you. John Goodman?
Does anybody know, are these, are both the two candidates truly progressives? Or does any of them have any baggage with, you know? I mean, I just can't trust anybody these days with, with being really conservatives and sheep's clothing.
Any comments on that?
Yeah, I don't know specifically about that, John, but my husband and I met for a couple of hours over the weekend. He dropped by our house. We had coffee on the porch and he is extremely knowledgeable about climate, energy and health. And I've got to say, he, I know Trevino's done a couple of projects, but Mario Bravo, if we really believe that climate and energy are an issue, he sees the whole picture. He is knowledgeable about every aspect. And I truly believe he would be helpful to us energy-wise and health-wise in San Antonio.
Thank you. Rob Koma?
Yes, when Diego Bernal resigned to go run for state representative, there was an application process where people could put their name in for this position. And that's how Roberto Trevino was selected by city council. There were people who were attorneys and doctors and there was even a union organizer named me that put their name in. There were thirteen of us whose names were on there. And I'm very appreciative every day that I wasn't selected because it's a very, very tough job. The one architect on the plan was, was Roberto Trevino. And I lived in district one for thirty-five years. I'm now living in John Courage's district and a proud supporter of him. But I know, I was talking the other day to friends who are members of the musicians' union, who are members of the stagehands union, who are a member of the hotel employees' union, as well as the building and construction trades union. And they have nothing but good things to say about the relationship that Roberto Trevino has had with them and helping them with their specific issues. And yes, it is district one, it is inner city. And some of the people who he has helped don't live or vote in the inner city, but they work there. And so it is a very, very important function. And I'm not saying anything at all about Mario. I think he's a fine person, would do a good job. I just think we have two nominal candidates here, both of whom I consider to be progressive. Roberto Trevino had been named a precinct chair shortly before that process opened up and, and he became the city council member. I'd love to see him more involved, but I'd also like to see Mario more involved in Democratic Party politics. But by two cents.
All right, any further comments? Any further comments? Okay, then now.
Hello, hello, I had a, I had a comment.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I, hello, my name is Matthew. I was supposed to be here earlier for the forum, but I did not have a chance to speak. I know y'all are deliberating about endorsements for one right now. So it might be a little late to do like introductions, but I mean, if, if it was all right with y'all, I would like to do.
We'll give you two minutes, Mr. Governor.
I appreciate it. Thank you, thank you. I, I agree that, you know, with a lot of the statements y'all are making, how do we know, how do we truly know these two candidates are progressive? Well, we can look back at their, we can look back at their record. Only one of us has shown that he is truly progressive. That would be Mario Bravo. He has come out in terms of environmental defense and such. And for me, that's truly, or, you know, I, my specialty lies. I'm a former student at UTSA with biology and environmental science background. So science, technology, that is all my. So science, technology, that is all my forte. Uh, and with the city council term, we are looking to totally reform our park system. And our development code and our city charter to reflect. A much healthier, safer and livable place for those who can walk those disabilities, you know, everyone and anyone. Uh, to the future, we look at public transportation, uh, increasing via routes to help our elderly and disabled communities. And working with CPS installs. To rein in overspending in those agencies. Uh, CPS Paula Goldman makes over half a million dollars with benefits, so. You know, when when we were paying our high energy bills for this last February, you know, it's something to to take into account, you know. Again, a a former student from UTSA, born and raised in San Antonio and um. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, yeah. Okay, we were right in the midst of uh, of voting for um. Uh, endorsement. Uh, uh, those in favor of Mario Bravo, please raise your hand. Use, I either physically raise your hand or put the raised hand uh up. I count one. Thirteen, okay. Those in favor, please put your hands down. Hands down, please. Cancel my hand. All right. Okay. Um, those in favor of Roberto Trevino, please raise your hand. Put your actual hand up or you can use the hand up. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Uh, okay. Uh, we have a vote. Uh, uh, majority for uh, Mario Bravo, however, it did not meet the two thirds threshold. Uh, for as highest level endorsement. Um. So uh. We can do a lower level endorsement. Um, but um.
May I make a suggestion?
Yeah, sure, ma'am.
I would like to take a vote. I would move to take a vote that we. Uh. Just say we have a favorable opinion of both of these candidates.
Okay, uh, that motion appears to be in order. Is there a second?
Bob Como seconds.
Okay, move the segment that we uh, vote that we have a favorable impression of both. Both Mr. Trevino and Mr. Bravo. Uh, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Uh, use the raise hand function or. Hand up. Nice, I will support that. So that would give up a majority of nineteen of thirty six present. So yes, the most the motion passes. Okay, so we have voted not as an endorsement, but a favorable impression of both. Uh, Bravo and Trevino. Okay, thank you. Oh, so, okay, we need to move on to the next item on the agenda. Renewal of our Texas Public Radio support at six hundred dollars. We have uh, supported Texas Public Radio for the past ten years. Uh, the the cost of a. Nonprofit. Uh. Port is six hundred dollars. Um. Okay, is there a motion?
Continue the support.
Okay, it is it has been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Moving the second that we continue our support. All those in favor, raise your hand, please.
Okay, so thirteen hands raised and one yes.
And bunch of hands in the.
Fourteen now. And one yes.
Uh, okay, all those opposed, all those opposed. Will be yes, people put your hands down. All those opposed.
Let me clear clear the.
Yeah.
Feedback. Okay, all right. Anybody opposed to this?
Is there any, is there any, anyone opposed?
I don't see any hands.
Uh, the motion passes, we will donate six hundred dollars to uh, Texas Public Radio. Okay. Um, the third item is support or endorse city council candidates. And that's just an opportunity to repeat that when we endorse a candidate, we shouldn't just say, you know. Put it online or see the press release. Please, we actually go out and and do the work. Um, that we uh, block walk, that we will phone bank, that we will. Send write postcards, whatever uh, the situation requires. So. Um, I I do encourage each and every one of you and including myself. Uh, to provide active support to our endorsed candidate.
I'd like to, I'd like to mention something.
Yes.
At the Bear County Democratic Party, we're doing phone calls. We're calling the people who voted by mail last year and ninety percent of them want to vote again. When we called the bear elections, they only had fifty mail ballot applications in. So any of you who are supporting a candidate might let the candidates know that getting mail ballots could actually be a winning. You know, it could be a winning score for their candidate because there are almost no mail ballot applications in and uh, that's a good way to get people to vote for you. That's all.
Yeah, in fact, um, at the election integrity meeting, um, it was stated that only that Jackie Callanan has only received two. Mail-in ballot applications, mine.
Not possible.
I know, mine and and another person, so.
I I sent mine in on the second of January, but it's about fifty of them, yeah. It's when we called, they had fifty.
Okay, uh, so do if you if you are eligible and you vote by mail, please do send in your application so you can get your your mail-in ballot. Sent mine in, not the second of January, but like the middle of the month, so uh, please, please do so. All right. Um. The fourth item on the agenda is uh, new business meeting speakers or activities on May eighth and June twelfth. Any any idea? I'm all ears.
Oh. Um. May eighth, that's after the.
After the.
The election.
I thought we were waiting to learn about the runoff.
Well, we could put a placeholder in there, somebody that is a regular or, you know.
Would it would it make sense to um? Uh, turn it into sort of a get out the vote for the runoff meeting? Uh, and and.
We might, we might want to invite runoff candidates because uh, there will definitely be runoffs. There's no question.
Yeah, there will be.
Uh, runoff candidate.
But.
Hey, maybe we could invite Jackie Callanin.
Well, yeah, I don't know about inviting candidates because I think you're probably ended up with like Brock House and.
Right.
You're probably end up with, you know, Clayton Perry and. Somebody else.
Uh, yeah, you're right.
Those guys.
Well, it's a little. Very didn't show up for our first round, although Brock House did, I would.
It, but you know that Perry got COVID? Did anybody hear that?
No.
No.
He got COVID.
Was that fact?
Yes, I did.
Um, in case some people weren't at our last meeting. Um, we did endorse Ron Nierenberg unanimously for mayor. And we did endorse city council District Two Tyrone Darden. And we did endorse John Courage unanimously for District Nine. And we endorsed Ezra Johnson for District Ten. It's in the minutes, but just in case you didn't notice it in the minutes from last month.
Yeah, the the endorsements are in the minute. I sent out.
And they're on the website also.
Right.
Yeah.
Is there a way to get that in the newspaper? The reporting of our endorsements?
I don't think we want it in the newspaper.
No, because they can, because we're Democrats and this is a nonpartisan race and some of them are going to be, especially John, you know, especially John.
It might even hurt John.
Yeah.
Uh, okay, uh, well, it any, okay, then we will do something regarding the runoff in for May eighth. Ideas further, further forward, June twelfth. Okay, I guess we'll just discuss it in the the executive board meeting, the next one. Um, okay, um, any announcements? I have a bunch of events and dates uh, on the bottom of of the agenda, have it there. Um. Uh, there will be an events and fundraising committee meeting on March, Wednesday, March the seventeenth, six thirty, laughing liberally. Uh, March the eighteenth, seven P M. Be there.
Are we also meeting uh, now after this meeting was laughing?
We are meeting after after this meeting at today, as a matter of fact.
Also, everybody, the website is, uh, our new website is going to launch probably some a beta form, um, April fifteenth. Keep it, it'll look significantly different from what we have.
All right. Um, we will have a budget and finance committee meeting on Monday, the twenty second of March.
Um. A point of clarification.
Uh.
Um, maybe I'm just uh, too old and behind the times, but I haven't the faintest idea what um, beta. What was, Sandy was was saying something. I don't know what she's talking about.
Uh, it's like, um.
A test.
Yeah, it's like, you know, it's it's a test site so that you can look at it. It it's not, it doesn't go live. Uh, you can look at it and use it actually, but it's if you're looking up any B C D dot org, it'll show our old website. Um, it's just a way for you to kind of get an idea, give us some comments and uh.
Find problems.
Yeah, yeah.
It's a test so you they find they can find the problems with the site.
Right.
Bob Como.
Yes, sir. Uh. Ezra Johnson will have a fundraiser on Sunday, the eighteenth of April. That is the night before early voting starts. Uh, it's gonna be a fun evening. Uh, it's sketchy right now. We're putting it together. We'll have a lot more details at the next meeting. But we are inviting people to become sponsors at the hundred dollar, two hundred and fifty dollar or maximum five hundred dollar level. So get with me at Bob the Union Guy at AOL dot com. And let's raise some money for Ezra. Uh, he is running a phenomenal campaign. A number of people on this zoom meeting right now are helping with that and we thank you very much for all of your efforts. But uh, it is a very, very well-run, very well-thought-out, structured campaign. And yes, indeed, we will have a major, major component will be balloting by mail. So um, I'm aboard.
What date was that, Robert?
Sunday, April the eighteenth. At probably about six thirty in the evening. It'll be lively. It'll be a lot of fun.
Okay, uh, any other announcement? Um, okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
Oh, still move.
Second.
Okay, it's moving the second to adjourn. Uh, all those in favor, raise your hand.
Great meeting.
Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you so very much. Uh, those of you who are members of the events and fundraising committee, don't uh, don't log off.